Their basic website, then I could add it to the repository and voters would have what they need to do their homework before they vote. That's it. But the reality I encountered was that simple. Norm. Many candidates weren't making their information available, or at least it wasn't noticeable. Some ignored outreach, some ducked questions. That's when Inform the Vote NJ had to evolve from a passive repository into an active press role. And this is where Commissioner Suie really helped set the ball rolling. Last year, when he wasn't even on the ballot, I explained the project to him and said, "I've been trying to get people to participate." His answer was short, "I'll talk to you." That was it. No drama, no hedging, no requirement to follow him around town until he agreed. He gave me his phone number, we lined up topics, I drove to his house, set up microphones in his kitchen, and forty minutes later, we had a meaningful issues-based conversation for Millville voters. It wasn't difficult, but it mattered. That leads me to the second theme. This doesn't have to be dramatic. For two years, I've asked basic questions of candidates. Sometimes they've cooperated, sometimes they avoided. But lately, I'm being told that my involvement is somehow the cause of drama. Just this past weekend, I was at a community event that should have had nothing to do with politics. And within an hour, a government employee approached me asking that we keep politics out of it, don't make a scene, and don't let it hit the paper. And look, I get the instinct. People don't want to feel like every backyard moment is being reported. But at the same time, asking me to not notice things or keep politics out of it is now part of the story. Because if I'm being asked to turn a blind eye, that mirrors the very cultural problems I've been talking about for two years. And let's be honest, the drama doesn't start with me. If the type of informational product and press services had already been present, I would have just reviewed it, voted, and went on with my life. But here we are. And at that same event this past weekend, there were candidates who had plenty of time to hang out all day, but who haven't had time to make a website, answer a questionnaire, or come here for a free radio interview. So what's the problem here, really? Along the way, I've also heard quotes like "your letter scared me," referring to a simple outreach letter asking for campaign information. Or "they're afraid you're going to print it," meaning print what they actually say. I've been directly told by leadership, this is the dance between campaigns and the press. And to clarify, the dance means campaigns have lots of things that they need to focus on, and they could answer endless questions from the press. So it's the job of the press to approach them and collect the information. And that right there is part of the issue. If we don't have a robust process, no regular press conferences, no scheduled Q and A sessions with candidates, no clear lines about what's fair game and what isn't, then of course, backyard events, parades, and festivals become part of the dance floor. Because I don't know where else I'm supposed to stand. And if government employees want common sense compartmentalization, then maybe they should be the ones advocating for a community culture that sets up that process. Until then, every event is political by default. And if that makes me look dramatic, well, maybe the structure of the dance itself is the problem. Finally, the third theme, the so-called mean guys. Commissioner Suie has a reputation in town for being the mean guy on the board. He's willing to talk about that tonight. And I'll be honest, I can relate. Sometimes being direct, honest, and transparent gets mistaken for being mean. I've been called the same thing simply for asking candidates to provide the most basic information, for writing down what's happening in meetings, and for requesting interviews. And here's what I'll say about Commissioner Suie. Whether you agree with him or not, he knows his stuff. When I talk to him, I get the sense I could throw almost any issue his way, and he's got an answer ready. Not because it's rehearsed, but because he's been doing the job and he knows the community. That's the vibe of someone who shows up prepared. And it's certainly not the vibe of people who are afraid of letters, afraid of going on the record, and afraid of the radio. So ask yourself, Mr. and Mrs. Voter, without me directly endorsing anyone, would you rather have honest, accessible, mean guys pushing the process forward? Or would you prefer leaders, representatives, and administrators who admit they're afraid of the process? So tonight, we're going to put preparation to the test. We'll talk about Millville, Suie's agenda, and issue stances for the upcoming term. And we'll explore whether being labeled the mean guy is really an insult, or maybe a backhanded compliment. And with that, Commissioner, welcome to the show.
Well, thank you. It's nice to be back on the radio. It's been quite a while since I've been on the radio. So I'm ready to answer any questions you want to throw at me.
Cool. Well, uh, let's get started with your background. There's several aspects of your background that I'm just now getting to learn over the past week or so. And I think they're quite interesting and illuminating to how your experience prepares you not only for what you've already done as a commissioner, but how it will help you moving forward. So is there anything specific you'd like to bring up about your background experience?
Well, I'll just give it to you in a nutshell, I guess. So I, you know, raised in Millville, actually born at Vileman Hospital due to a snowstorm, but ever since birth. Millville, graduated high school, went to college for about a year and a half, ran out of money, joined the Air Force. We had a pretty interesting job in communications, basically maintenance, electromechanical, teletypes, cryptographic equipment. So that was pretty interesting. Gave me a good electronics background. When I got out of the Air Force, four years and eight months later, as a Staff Sergeant, I went to work for Wheaton's, maintaining CNC and NC machines. So that experience in the military worked right into a job, which I'm grateful, and that was experience in the private industry. I finished school while I was full-time working, and also had a son and, you know, and wife, married at the time. I spent four years overseas. Did that, went back to school, got my degree in mathematics, which has come in pretty handy for some of the city stuff, just because of the number of variables, which I maybe we'll get into later. Went to work at the prison, just the way circumstances led, ended up being a captain and got involved in the union, was the secretary, treasurer, vice president, executive vice president of the New Jersey Superior's Officers Association, and then went on to hold the same positions in the New Jersey Commanding Officers Association. So while I was doing that, I got wrapped up in the politics, chairman of the PAC Committee, dealt with mostly politicians on a state level, sometimes on the federal level. And it's amazing how when you're chairman of a PAC Committee, you'll get calls right back. But if you're just regular Joe Schmo, you'll have to go through all this staff.
Oh, you don't have to tell me?
You know that now, right? So form a PAC Committee, start writing.
There you go. Now I get all the power in the world, right?
Yeah. So, you know, that was all interesting. And it's interesting, I got involved with the union because somebody messed with me.
Okay.
So if you want to make good union leaders, make bad management.
There you go.
So, you know, and...
That's how you inspire action.
And I ran for office, I lost, and I won, and I lost, and I won again.
Yeah.
So here I am.
Cool. Well, let's unpack some of that. So one of the recurring themes that comes to my mind, especially when I first started this, is you're an incumbent, right? And in my mind, that means you've already got your hands on the paperwork. You see what's going on, you have some of those relationships already established. So can you speak a little bit more about current projects that are going on, that you're going to be able to help continue forward, that maybe a newcomer might take some time with onboarding and...
Well, not only that, you know, a newcomer could kill the project if they don't like it. You know, we have candidates that have said they don't want development.
Oh.
So if you don't want development, and you have these development projects coming in, and, you know, you kill it, and we can get into why that'd be a bad idea.
Sure.
But we have one really big project that's nearing fruition, and that's with Community Realty Partners, for the purchase of, I can't remember exactly how many acres, a couple hundred acres, at the Hurley Industrial Park at the Millville Airport. The sale alone is a $10 million sale, a little over $10 million.
Right.
And that's money that will be coming into the city. And really, one of the main reasons I'm running is because I'm very afraid that if people get in that don't know what they're doing, they will spend that on one-time burst, and it will be gone. And we're never going to get the opportunity to sell that land twice. Once we sell it, it's gone.
Right.
So that money needs to be reinvested into infrastructure that will bring more business.
Right.
And I, I don't know, I can get on a roll here.
Well, I mean, that's already very insightful. So what is the plan for the CRP group to do with the land?
They're building warehousing, a hotel, and some professional office stuff.
Okay, so already you've got a sale of $10 million, which is immediate revenue for the city. And then you've got economic development going on, which should increase ratables and...
Well, correct. You know, that's the driving force for everything, right? So, you know, all of us want pretty much the same thing, right? We want a clean city, a safe city. You know, we want economic opportunity or jobs for people to work here.
Yep.
You know, we want an affordable city. So I think that the difference between myself and a lot of the other candidates, they say what they want, but they don't have a plan to get it.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So you have to be able to make a plan and execute a plan.
Right.
So I don't, a lot of our candidates, and, you know, God bless them all for running, I'm glad that people want to be involved, right?
Sure.
Great, it's a civic responsibility. But you have to temper that, that want with experience, you know, and I'm not insulting anybody, but like we have one candidate that wants volunteers, which is great, but there's some things you can't use volunteers for. I know this because myself and Commissioner Parke and Perry, we had volunteers, a volunteer that was doing filing. And the union filed agreements, and it turns out, we couldn't use a volunteer for that.
Right.
So we have, you got, you know, when you do that, it's a great thing to do, the more volunteers, the better. Right? And, and, you know, it's a great idea.
But you can't use it for everything.
But it's limited, right? You can only do so much. So you got to kind of dig into that stuff.
You have to have the knowledge.
And have the knowledge to know exactly what you can do, you know?
Right.
And that knowledge can be learned, and that will be learned pretty fast, you know? That's one thing that you're going to learn fast.
Right, because you'll, you'll hit your head into the roadblock, right?
Yeah, you're going to hit the roadblock, and then you could, you know, hey, sometimes you can figure out a way over it, under it, through it. That's what I try to do. And then sometimes you're like, well, this isn't a battle worth fighting, we're going to move on to something else.
Right, gotcha. So that's a really good example of incumbency being important. Then the next thing, you mentioned your mathematics degree. And for me, you know, I have a background in coding, which means you have to look at the formulas and the systems, and how one thing affects another. And it sounds to me like your mathematics degree helps you see systems in a similar way.
It helps you understand multi-variables, which is exactly what you're talking about, right? If I do this, then all, you know, I put all the inputs in, and this is the output.
Sure.
Well, now suddenly, this input changes.
Yep.
Now something else has to come into play that, if you want the same output, to balance that out.
Yep.
So you have to look at that and finance, as well as any project, any really problem you're working on.
Yeah. Do you have like a tangible example of that recently, or whatever?
Recently, let's, let me think recently. So, well, I mean, you know, even like economic projects, right? So you're dealing with a developer that, and I can go to Nav Avenue, for example, right? So, you know, I think we should get Nav Avenue done, we can get into the county stuff later if you want. But you need money to design the road. The county said, "Look, we need you to put up money to design the road."
Yep.
So we used what was called Revenue Allocation Bond. So we get the developer to post, we post a bond, the payment of the bond comes through us onto the bond, but there's no direct cost to the taxpayer, right? So that's one of the things that had to change. Now that affects what they're investing and, you know, everything else, but it's a bunch of variables to put a deal together.
Yep.
That you take here and get, you know, it's no different, for an example, buying a car, right?
Yeah.
You may want, here's the price. Now all of a sudden, you know, I'm not buying it unless I get a real spare tire.
Right.
Right? So, you know, maybe you don't know, maybe that affects the price of your trade-in, they're not telling you the truth, but it affects it. You know, it could be a better package.
Or there's a, there's a model that has the real spare tire, but now to keep the same price, you don't get power windows or whatever it is.
Yeah, exactly. It's the same kind of stuff all over the place.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Cool, yeah. Um, then, I remember during our correspondence, we were talking about your military experience being part of the public sector, but then when you went over to Wheaton Glass, that was private sector, and that gave you experience combining the two areas?
Right, yeah. I mean, you know, the military and the private sector, you know, two totally different things, really. But, you know, in the military, it's, a lot of the stuff's the same, you have supply chain you have to deal with, and as you move up in rank, even enlisted. Logistics and everything all goes together, transportation and, you know, the intelligence, and it all blends together. And when you're in the private sector, you know, you're, you're working at Wheaton's, you don't happen to work in the mold shop on the machines that make the molds, maintaining them. So, you know, you've got the guys that are writing the programs to make the molds, you've got machinists making tooling, right? And then they're shipping stuff out and shipping stuff in, and, you know, if you're halfway smart, you have half a brain, you're looking and see how the stuff works together.
Yeah.
So that all, you know, it all comes in with just learning how things work.
Sure. And then, um, we were also talking about your experience as a corrections officer, and how that kind of felt like managing a small city.
Yeah, well, you know, you're, well, first of all, you have, you know, I was a captain, so I had roughly 600 officers working there. And I was, you know, and believe it or not, even when you're not working, you're responsible for what they do, you can ask people if they're fired over that kind of stuff.
Right.
So, I mean, there's captains no more, now they're majors. But anyway, so you get in and, you know, inmates, it is like a small city, you know, inmates come in, inmates go out, right? They need to be fed, they need to have clothing, they need to see psychologists and medic, medicine, and dentists, and different security classifications, and you have maintenance and electric and, you know, backup generators, and all that stuff has to all work together.
Yep.
So as you move up, you understand better how that all works together, and why certain things are done certain ways.
Yep, it sounds good. And I know you already hit on your union involvement, but do you want to unpack what that experience was like and how that helps you prepare for the role?
Yeah, I mean, people that don't have, or, you know, haven't yet experienced public unions, being in a public union and basically, you know, this time you're kind of on the management side, that kind of time you're kind of on the, the union side. So, you know, I had experience going to the Public Employee Relations Commission, even testifying in trandat committees, and grievance experience and stuff like that. So that helps you understand, because sometimes, you know, sometimes union guys will try to get away with stuff, right? They're going to, naturally, it's part of the business. So if you have a better understanding of what they can do, what they can't do, unfair labor practices, if you think you'll win, if you think you'll lose, and there's been time, like, you know, I told the director, "H R, they're right." So, you know, they're right, then that's the end of it. They, they win, they're right, and okay, let's move on, we're not going to fight about something they're right about.
Yeah, sure. So, I mean, that sounds, in my mind, like a big overarching view of your background and experience, and how important some of that stuff is, because oftentimes, when you're in a new job, there's all these intangibles that you don't really know yet until you start shuffling the paperwork around, you start actually talking to people who know more than you do about that specific role. It, it's not like you can just kind of have an idea in your head of how to get things done, and then just, once you're elected, it happens.
Right, well, you know, first of all, you need to understand the rules so that you can at the very least manipulate them to your advantage, right? So, you know, purchasing laws is one of the things that's kind of vague, and there's ways to work around stuff to get, be able to do what you want. I'm not saying you violate the law, there, there's a thousand rules, and you have staff to help you with that, right?
Sure.
So, look, this is what I want to do, and sometimes they may say, you know, "We can't do that." Well, let me do it this way.
Right.
And then you have the state you can rely on, you can call the DCA, and then they'll answer your questions. Can I do this? Yes. Or no, that's ridiculous, right? Either way.
Sure.
And so that helps you. Also, you do have professional staff, and sometimes you have great professional staff, and sometimes you have professional staff that is not so great.
Sure.
So, you know, when they tell me I can do something, or you're not allowed to do that, my answer is always, "Show me."
Right.
Show me the rules, show me the policy, show me the law. And if you can't show me that, then don't tell me that.
Right.
And pretty quick, they get the idea that, okay, well, I'm not going to, you know, buffaloing, right? I'm going to have to know my stuff when I, you know, because, you know, you have great professional staff, and you have not so great professional staff. You have great employees, and you have some not so great employees. And, you know, nothing will ruin a work, a workplace like an employee that's not good, that continues to get away with stuff, while other people are working their butts off.
Right.
Because after a while, they're like, "Why am I doing this?" You know, he or she, they're, they're not doing anything.
Drags morale down.
Drags morale down, it certainly does. Which may lead to when, to why I'm mean.
Sure.
So I'm an elected official, and my responsibility is not the employee, my responsibility is to the residents.
Yep.
And there are some commissioners that forget that. You know, they'll say, "Oh, my employee this, my..." You know, "How about your residents?" Right? So I hold employees accountable. Now, sometimes, you know, "Hey, I made a mistake." Okay, fix it, let's move on, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You made a mistake, let's move on. You did something on purpose.
That's different.
You know, that's a whole different ballgame. I mean, you know, we had an employee that was getting paid for two years just because he would never show up to a hearing.
Wow.
So it was like reissue the disciplinary charges and have a hearing, and let's get this over with.
Right.
Right? And that's what we did, and we, and ultimately, that, that employee departed. But, you know, you have to hold employees accountable. If you don't, it's a circus. And unfortunately, with COVID.
Yeah.
The employees, you know, they got kind of used to being alone, being by themselves, nobody telling them what to do, nobody watching what they were doing.
No accountability.
No accountability. So that, that made it a little more difficult, and, and for the most part, we have that straightened out in, in most of the departments.
Sure. And then, since we kind of already hit on the topic of the mean guys, quote unquote.
Right.
Um, I think we were also talking a little bit about how people, sometimes they want transparency during the meetings, they want the open discussion, they want to see part of the process, but then it doesn't always look so pretty.
Well, you know, you have people that say, "I just, you know, we should all just get along." Well, it's pretty hard for me to get along with you if, I'll take the example of the shared services with the, with the Sheriff's Department, to bring the sheriffs in using UEZ money.
Sure.
You know, we had three commissioners that didn't want to do that in the beginning, for no good reason, and, you know, I've got to tell you, I think this is the best sheriff we've ever had in this county. You know, I would say that to anybody. But we had three commissioners that didn't want to do that. So, and no good explanation why, it's, "Oh, we, we got to do it right, we got to do it right."
What does that even mean?
What's that mean, right? What's your, you don't want to use second generator, yeah, second generation funds, all you're using, you're not even using the interest, doesn't even amount to the interest for one year on the account.
Uh, can you unpack that a little bit?
So you have money, second generation is the money, and it's not like it was, but that's money that was left over from the UEZ.
Okay.
So I wanted to use like $35,000 out of it till the first generation funds got approved, which are the ones that get replenished all the time.
Okay.
So they, they didn't want to do that, on the advice of our consultant, which I can get into that a little more later. So, you know, they didn't want to do that. Well, you know, I'm going to fight for that.
Right.
I mean, you sit here and you tell me you want more police officers in town.
And now you have an opportunity.
You have an opportunity, and then you're saying no. I mean, the question I asked at the time is, "Look, I get you guys hate me, but what do you got against the other 28,000 people?" Right? So I, you know, so maybe that's not pretty. And, you know, there are times when, you know, I, I've sat up there and listened to my fellow commissioners lie. And, yeah, the first time in office, I called the guy a liar. Nobody like that.
Of course.
Don't lie to me, don't tell me you're going to do something, five minutes later, you come out here and you did something else.
Right. They want transparency and open communication.
Do you want transparency? Do you want debate? You know, when we had, if we do it behind closed doors, you accuse us of making backroom deals.
Right.
When we do it in the public...
It does, nobody likes watching.
Then you don't like that either. But, you know, I think in the long run, transparency is better.
Yeah.
And I think mostly, to me, this has been a fairly transparent commission.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, I mean, I, I agree. That applies to personal life a lot, too. People have a tendency to not want to tell the whole truth and hide behind previous statements or whatever, and, but then, once the truth finally comes out, it's worse than if you had just talked about it initially.
Well, here, here's a funny story about, I'm not going to mention the commissioner's name, but he sends me an email that he doesn't like the way I'm talking to an employee. Problem is, he was never present when I talked to that employee. So he was never there.
Right.
So I, you know, I get it, you're, you're listening to the employee, but...
It, yeah, how do you even...
You need to be smart enough to say, "Hey, there's, you know, at least two sides to this story," right?
Right.
My grandmother used to say, "There's your side, my side, and the truth."
Yep.
Right? So, but you've, you've got to be intelligent enough and wise enough, I guess wise enough.
To handle it appropriately.
To handle that appropriately, yeah.
Cool. Uh, so then let's move on to the second section, which is, what is your basic campaign message?
Well, I'm me, right? So when you talk to me, you're going to get truth, you're going to get transparency, and you may not like that. And some people will say, "I'm mean." And like I said, mean and holding accountable people accountable is mean? Then, okay, I'll wear that label. And if I win the election, great, I'm more than happy to serve. If I lose the election, I'll go do something else. This is not the end of my life if I lose, right?
Right.
So that having been said, I want safe streets, I want infrastructure, and there's only one way to get that, to make that continue, is through economic development. If you don't have economic development, so you can increase your ratables and other forms of revenue, which, like cannabis, which I can get into that, too, you know, if you don't have that, if you don't have cooperation between floors, the issue COs, and tax collector that's supposed to collect that money, that's revenue that you're losing. Right? So economic development is the key driver to everything. If you don't have that, you can say, "I want 50 more police officers on the street, 20 more firemen, and I want all these streets paved."
But how are you going to get it done?
How are you going to do it?
Right.
Right? So that's imperative to that, and, you know, using UEZ money. And I said, "I'd say something about that." So we were told that we couldn't use UEZ money to pave roads. So we brought UEZ in-house.
Okay.
If you remember, the Holly City Development Corporation was doing it, and they said, "We don't want to do it anymore." So we brought it in-house, and, I don't know, Sam might be listening, but Sam Cruz kind of took that role over as administrator. And it's, I'm glad we did it because it really opened up a whole lot more opportunity for us.
Okay.
And, you know, what you'll find sometime, and I'm not saying this with the Holly City Development Corporation, but you'll find other outside entities.
Yeah.
They know what they're doing, but they may not want to do what the commission wants to do.
Mm hmm.
Right? They may have other plans. For example, the CCIA is buying Wood School for a dollar.
Okay.
Nobody knows what they want to do with it.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah.
You call them and you ask them, you know, I haven't called them, but other people have and they're like, well, right now we're going to use it to train policemen and firemen. Well, I'm sure that's not the long-term plan for that building, right?
Right.
I don't know what it is. We'll find out eventually. I'm sure after the election, we'll find out. It's what we're going to find out.
Okay.
I have my suspicions, but it would just be speculation.
Cool. So then let's unpack what is going on with economic development in Millville. So we already talked about the CRP project. I think there's a couple of other things going on, like, uh, you mentioned Livoni.
Livoni was, uh, you know, they were supposed to come a while back, then they were, they weren't. We, you know, Ray Perry, our economic development administrator at the time, reached out.
Well, for people who don't already know, can you explain what Livoni is now?
Livoni is an Italian meat company. They're, they're here, they, you know, in Millville, they're cutting and packing meats.
Okay.
High-end, you know, lunch meats. So, you know, they came back, they built their building, boom, they're up and running. So that's another ratable force.
Mm hmm.
Uh, Wheaton demolition, that was stuck. That went to court mediation.
Mm hmm.
I went to mediation, Mr. Perry, Mr. Russell, uh, even Commissioner McQuade was there at the time.
Yeah.
And we struck a deal and it's not moving fast enough.
Yeah.
You know, there's big piles of rubble there. I'm not happy that it's not moving faster.
Yeah.
But it's not all the developers' fault. I mean, I, you know, uh, sat with the DEP or I'm sorry, Department of Labor Division of Asbestos.
Mm hmm.
So they had a plan, it was approved, then it wasn't approved.
Hmm.
And, you know, we all met at city hall and if I hadn't been there, I wouldn't have believed it.
Okay.
Right? It was like, no, you can't, you know, you said we could do this. Yeah, but now you can't do this.
For what reason?
I, I don't even remember. It was something to do with, it had to be a, it didn't have to be a wet demolition, then it had to be a wet demolition.
Okay.
Which, you know, you're squirting water on, all the time to keep the asbestos out, constant air monitoring during that part of the demolition.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, it's still not done, but it's millions of dollar demolition. And thankfully, the city's not on the hook for that. So is it taking longer? Yes.
Um, so then just to clarify. Yeah, 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 but just on those two alone. So the Wheaton project is an, another example of something that's ongoing.
Correct.
And you've already, you're familiar with as an incumbent.
Right.
Livoni is something that is a recent accomplishment.
Correct.
Okay. So an example of economic development accomplishment. And then, um, he also mentioned warehousing on Buckshutum.
Right. There's another project that warehousing across the street from the airport on Buckshutum Road.
And, uh.
So that's in the, that's not done yet, but it's getting there. They're in their due diligence period, which means they're checking everything out.
Right. So would you file that under another example of incumbency having familiarization with what's already going on and helping that it follows through?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I mean, we have a redevelopment attorney that can definitely get people up to speed.
Hmm.
But they're still going to have to understand the nuances, meet the people, you know, go through all that stuff. And then, and I'm sure they can do it given time, but it's an unnecessary delay.
Yeah, it's a, it's a stall basically.
Now, also in the part of economic development, I didn't go over this with you because I didn't think of the time we were talking. But the UEZ money, you know, that we get, you know, we're, you know, we just applied to the state to pave Columbia Avenue.
Uh huh.
So on Columbia Avenue, you have Mission Spirits, the library was just redone. We have another lot. We tore the rescue squad down.
Yeah.
That's, you know, for sale.
Okay.
So for some kind of development and then somebody comes up with a good plan. We have what I call the blue building on Buck Street that was, was sold, so it's back on the tax rolls. Nothing's happened with it yet. There are myriad of reasons for that.
Mm hmm.
Uh, the bank on the corner, Two North High, I believe it's Two North High. Anyway, everybody has the local national bank, right? So at least that stuff is back on the tax rolls. Again, it's slow. And, you know, and, and it's because Millville faces challenges. It's because you have homeless in the doorway.
Yeah.
You know, I'm asking you to build a high-end restaurant and you come here and there's a guy sleeping in the doorway.
Right.
I, I don't think this is the place I want to be, right? So that kind of stuff is challenging. So, but at, at least it's on the tax rolls and.
One step at a time.
Hopefully it'll eventually get done.
Mm hmm.
So there's another restaurant that's going to be opening soon, but I don't want to get into that because the guy didn't say I could. So I, I, I don't want to do that.
Yeah, sure. Uh, well then.
Wait a minute.
Oh, go ahead.
Couple more things with UEZ while I'm thinking about it. So we also went back to, and thanks to the Holly City Development Corporation for this one, was facade grants. But we upped it to twenty thousand dollars. So if you want a business on High Street, you can get a grant for twenty thousand dollars to help you out.
Okay.
And the, the, uh, UEZ zone got larger.
Mm hmm.
So that should help too. So, you know, all that kind of stuff that we did, that we accomplished, um, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, uh, a good unpacking of economic development in Millville. And again, it speaks to incumbency. You've already got your hands on it. You're familiar. You're going to help it move forward. But then let's transition to that homeless problem because that's come up in county race, uh, conversations. It's coming up in city race conversations and it sounds like a national conversation. So can you unpack a little bit about what the current problem is? What, like, why are we not getting that solved?
Well, I think, you know, you can kind of break it down into two, well, three types, but two of them kind of go together. So you have mental health and drugs.
Sure.
And then you have the financial, right? People may have lost their home due to whatever, whatever unfortunate financial circumstance led them to that. Those people you can probably help with relative ease compared to the other ones.
Yeah.
Right? The mentally ill, we've closed down mental institutions everywhere.
Mm hmm.
And obviously that, kind of like closing prisons, prisons, just let people out.
Right.
So you put people out in the street, drugs, the same thing. And, you know, we encourage it. It's, it's kind of amazing to me. We don't put, we don't want to put drug dealers in, in jail. I mean.
Yeah.
It, it's just, it baffles me.
Is this relating to, um, prosecutors, attorney generals and bail reform?
This is related to, A, bail reform.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we pass an ordinance to, you can't camp in the park. Well, let's say a cop arrested a guy that's sleeping overnight in the park. For example, city hall process seems to let him right out.
Mm hmm.
I'm sure unless he's got a criminal record and then it probably have to be an extensive one, he's not going to get locked up. We, we're not going to incarcerate him. So we also, you know, we give away a lot of stuff to the homeless.
Yeah.
And, you know, I have the parks department, when they run into homeless, I ask them, ask them where they're from.
Yeah.
Right? Just, I'm curious.
Mm hmm.
So we have some come from Atlantic City. We had one couple come from Kentucky. You know, so I get people want to help people, right?
Sure.
I want to help people. I don't want to not help people. But Millville is not a city with a ton of resources that can take care of a thousand homeless people, right?
Right.
You can't attract them.
Mm hmm.
And I've, I've asked at meetings for someone to come up with solutions. I've asked at the meeting with, with various pastors in town, what's the solution?
Yeah.
And, you know, one, one said, well, let's build tiny houses. Okay, where? Where do you live? We're going to put them there. Right? So that kind of, you know, and even that, if you build them, all you're going to get is more people that want them.
Yeah.
So nobody has a solution. The only solution I can find that work in Miami is they ship them out.
Yet to where?
Wherever. I don't know. They gave them a bus ticket, audio, see you later.
Right.
Now, I don't know if we ask them, they want to go, you want to go to California?
Mm hmm.
I wouldn't send them to Florida because Florida sent back twice as many. But, you know, where do you want to go?
I'm wondering if this relates a little bit to what we were talking about the other day in the sense of part of the solution could be in raising awareness and getting people more involved and asking the right questions to the right people. So i- in other words, we kind of cover the gubernatorial races like Chittorelli, Cheryl and their AG appointees. Um, would it be more appropriate to say, or pose these kinds of questions to Jack or Mikey and say, we've got a real problem with homeless throughout Cumberland County and other parts of the state? Are you going to be able to directly involve yourselves in cleaning up that process?
What's your solution, right?
Right.
I mean, you know, and for those that don't know, I had someone break into my house in the middle of the night.
Mm hmm.
Right? And I held him a gunpoint and the police came. And the guy was out in eight months.
Hmm.
And I forget how many offenses he already had. I mean, it was like twelve or fourteen or something.
Mm hmm.
And here this guy's out already. I mean, you know, put the criminals in jail, leave them there.
Right.
You know, riding down the street on four-wheelers, telling the cops they can't chase them.
That's another one that I was going to say, raise awareness to, uh, Chittorelli and Cheryl and be like, well, we've had a problem with these off-road vehicles for years.
I mean, we have attorney general handcuffs the state police in our police.
Sure.
And we have prosecutors, and not just here, all over the place that don't really want to really whack criminals.
Hmm.
You know, we closed prisons. Uh, so where do you put them now? We don't have a real county jail, right? So there was a county jail, the construction was canceled in the middle.
Yep.
And you guys can Google that and you can see who's responsible for that.
The concrete slab.
The concrete slab.
Right.
Right? So you have that. It was never done.
Mm hmm.
You know, why? Why isn't it done? It's been, I don't even know how many years it's been.
Yeah.
It's been a long time.
Right.
And it's totally ridiculous. So now I understand there's going to be some kind of shared service with Canada County.
Mm hmm.
They created an authority with more taxing power.
Mm hmm.
Uh, their own taxing power. I don't know how they're, that's going to represent the citizens of the county. If the authority, you don't vote for anybody on it.
Mm hmm.
Can just raise your taxes to pay for the jail. I don't know where that's going to lead, but I'm pretty sure it's not going to be pretty.
Yeah, I've already seen the rumblings online about, uh, some people not being very happy with the situation. I'm not an expert on it, but that's, I guess, the talk on the street or talk on the internets. Um, but yeah, a- again, that's another opportunity for more direct questioning to higher level candidates like Chittorelli and Cheryl, as in we have real problems down here where maybe a city commissioner is not in a position to directly handle it. And we need to raise awareness and advocacy so that those type of candidates are asked those appropriate questions.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you know, I, I look at, you know, our representation, right? And, and the governor's office, I don't think we get much down here.
Hmm.
I think our state representatives are pretty good.
Mm hmm.
For the most part, I agree with most of the stuff they do. I think they're pretty good. I don't think we could have a better congressman than Congressman Van Drew. He does a great job.
Hmm.
You know, can't ask for any better than that. Working with the county is a little more difficult. I mean, you know, you see the stuff with the county jail.
Mm hmm.
Trying to get Nav Avenue done and, uh, don't seem to be getting very far with that. But, uh, you know, I, you can't even get in the, you know, when you're talking to them, see what they say about that. If they'll talk to you, ask them about, what are your plans for Nav Avenue?
Right.
You know, I, I see what their priorities are. They want a county park system.
Mm hmm.
They want a county transportation, bigger county transportation system.
Yep.
I don't get that. I don't understand it.
Well, yeah, I've, I've heard some stuff, uh, against that in the sense of, you know, Philadelphia can't handle it. What makes us think?
We can't, we can't even handle the cat system. You know, I know from experience, my parents made an doctor's appointment. Then the bus didn't show up to pick them up, right? So.
Mm hmm.
And then, you know, you have the Middle Mile project, which I, I don't know. I don't see how that really benefited Millville.
Yeah, why don't you unpack that for a minute? Because, uh, the surface level, when I talk to most people in the county, first of all, they don't even know what the Middle Mile is. But when I explain it to them, they're like, oh yeah, of course we want better, uh, broadband infrastructure. And for people out there listening who don't already know, it's basically laying a ring of fiber optic cable around the county, which would then serve as a jumping off point for, uh, companies to connect broadband to the end user. Meaning somebody's actually going to hook it up to your house.
Well, you know, if, if a business, if the, first of all, if the business world thinks that's worthwhile, they're going to do it.
They would have already done it.
For the price that they're going to do, they could hook everybody up to the internet via satellite.
Mm hmm.
That didn't happen.
Right.
You know, you have people that live out in, you know, out in very rural areas in our county. Well, you moved to rural areas because you didn't want all the hassle with the city, but you all have, so have conveniences with the city.
Right.
Know what I mean?
Yeah. But then let's just accept the premise for a minute that it is a worthwhile project. Is there a particular circumstance with the city of Millville where it's not actually beneficial or?
I don't see it as beneficial. I mean, you know, we only have Comcast in Millville, but and I don't like the pricing, you know?
Right, yeah, yeah.
You know, but it really is the government going to compete with Comcast effect, Comcast effectively? They want to provide that middle link. Somebody's going to pay for that middle link.
Right.
And why should it be the taxpayers?
Mm hmm.
And, you know, and, and that's just what I think. You know what I mean? I'm sure that others have other, their opinions and that's fine.
Yeah, you're just not necessarily sold on the idea that it's going to be run effectively and efficiently.
Government runs very few things effectively and efficiently.
Gotcha. Um, then how about, let's take it back to the cannabis retail. So I've been covering Millville for a little bit over a year. And when I first started, it was quote unquote, the hot topic despite what other people's opinions of what actually constitutes the hot topic. But basically you guys have had a growing facility for a while and the sale of retail cannabis was not permitted, but can you unpack where it is right now and?
Well, we just passed the ordinance last week, I think, or, yeah, last Tuesday.
Sure.
So twenty days after it takes effect.
Mm hmm.
We've initiated an application process for people that want to sell retail cannabis. We're allowing three in the city.
Mm hmm.
I mean, we got that done and, you know, while people objected, you know, some people objected.
Hmm.
But, you know, I, I don't think it ever should have been legalized to begin with, but that battle was fought and lost, right? So it's legal. I can go to Vile and buy it. I can go to Vun and buy it. They're going to get the revenue.
Mm hmm.
So I'm still going to have to put up with the smell.
Mm hmm.
Why not get the revenue and try to do some good for the citizens with the revenue?
Right. Ride the wave.
Right, yeah. It's kind of, yeah, I mean, I, I don't see, really, it doesn't make any log, sense on a logical level, emotionally. Or maybe morally, you may say it's, it's immoral to allow people to sell.
Yeah, but I.
And I, I understand the point of view.
Sure. What I'm, what I'm getting at or the idea that's crossing my mind, it's almost like a jujitsu move in the sense of you were trying to fight against the legalization to an extent, but they committed to that move and so now you're just changing direction.
You've got to do something else, right?
Right.
You're not going to fight the same thing. You lost.
Now it's an opportunity to gain economic development and ratables and all that stuff.
And it should be a significant source of revenue. I looked at violence before. I don't recall what it is.
Mm hmm.
But, you know, it's two percent tax on sale, so should be a very significant source of revenue for Millville. You want to pay for the cops? You want to pay for the roads?
And we've seen the lines outside of the cannabis, so.
Went and looked just to watch, you know, see, hey, what's going on here?
Mm hmm. Lines out the door. So that is an opportunity for, uh, more revenue. And so let's see where.
Let me touch on something that most people don't, you know, realize was a pretty difficult accomplishment, which was redoing the master plan.
Which master plan?
The city master plan. So what can go where, your zoning laws and stuff like that. So, you know, and, and I can't thank Bob Galler, the chairman of our, our planning board and all the members of the planning board, but, and our planner, you know, Barbara Failey, all the work that went into that.
Okay.
It was a massive undertaking. We tried to do it when I was in office before and we almost got it done.
Mm hmm.
And then it sat on the back burner. So it, it was a project that was, I don't know, ten or eleven years in the making.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah.
So can you explain to me what the significance of it is?
Well, that, you know, like, it comes down to what's allowed where, you know, how do you, how do you want your city to go? How do you want it to progress with, with building and what?
Is it similar to what they just did at the county a couple of weeks ago? Did you see that?
I didn't see that on.
Oh, okay. So the county commissioner meeting has a new map that they coordinated with the state?
Yes, it's, yeah, all right. Now, yeah, it's basically like that, right? So you may, you may have some zones that were agriculture that you now want to change to different zones.
Yep.
And the whole, you know, you, you look at that for the whole city now it all intertwined and you have public hearings and.
Mm hmm.
So that was a, you know, and I'm glad that's gone.
So essentially that is playing into, or do you, you want to take the call or?
Yeah, why not? Let's see.
All right. Caller, you're on the air.
Listen, I just have a question. I'll hang up. I'm not trying to be controversial, but your guest did state that Governor Murphy didn't do anything right. Could he just tell me a couple? Cause I.
I didn't say he didn't do anything right. He did a lot of things that aren't right, in my opinion, okay? I don't like his attorney general picks. I don't like that he signed bail reform. So there's two examples there.
Okay, so.
Okay, he did, he did put it, he did put money into the public pension systems like he said he would. I like that. I think that's a good thing. He's not all bad.
A lot of good things. Now, the two things, I'm going to write down the two things you don't like and look them up because we don't have time. I'll look them up myself. Sure. Uh, um, how did he change the bail that, that you don't like?
What happened to it? People get out very easily and they're out free to commit more crimes.
But what types of criminals? All?
All kinds of criminals.
So you want more imprisonment, but our.
I want criminals, but not that I want more imprisonment. I'd rather have people obey the law and prison is a deterrent.
Well, it's not really, but that's, well, that's, that's.
Well, it sure stops them from committing crimes while they're in there.
Like you said, they shut down, um, they shut some down.
Shut some what down? I'm sorry.
Didn't they shut some county prisons down?
Well, they shut down state prisons for sure. They shut down mental institutions for sure.
Yes.
And that's not just Murphy. You know, more than one governor has done that.
We said that. We agree on that. Oh my God. See, I was a psych nurse and that's one thing that affected me and the community and society. That's what created homelessness, if you want to know the truth.
Well, I don't believe that.
My age, I worked in a psychiatric institution and when they were around, it was a, it was a city run. This was a Philadelphia. And when they shut that down, many, many, many were shut down. They, they all followed suit. I think it was Republicans. I'm never, I was never very political, so I'm not going to die on that hill, but I'm cer- I'm pretty certain it was because I, the mayor at the time was frank with them. They shut down Philadelphia General Hospital. And then, like I said, a lot of scene to follow suit.
Yeah, look, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we're, we're kind of, you know.
The indigence and the mentally ill had a place to go. That's why I think you see a lot of these crazy fights. People going out of their mind. They really don't sound sane. You've seen it.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I agree with you a hundred percent. You know, and, and don't get me wrong. My criticism goes to both parties. I'm not a big fan of Chris Christie or Christine Todd Whitman either, okay?
Okay. See, I kind of like Governor Murphy and if he's bad, I, I want to know.
Well, there's certain things he does that I don't agree with, but that's okay. You know, nobody's going to do everything you agree with.